Welcome to the July 6, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting. Today, we have Pastor Ray from Vineyard Church to give the invocation. Welcome Pastor Ray.
Thank you. Thank you Honorable Mayor Bark and Council Members for the privilege of opening tonight's meeting in prayer. Please bow your hearts with me as I lead us into God's presence in prayer. Heavenly Father, as recorded in your scriptures, you desire all people at all times to seek your mercy, grace, and favor in conducting our affairs here on earth. We ask your will be done here as in heaven, that we citizens of Muscatine will benefit from the decisions reached tonight by this council, and that you will send your Holy Spirit to guide the heart and mind of each council member to conduct tonight's business in such a way as to honor you and further bless our city and surrounding community. We give thanks for their service tonight. May their actions further the reputation of our city as a great place to live, work, and raise families. This we pray in the name of Almighty God. Amen.
Amen. Thanks Pastor Ray. Nancy, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Frelick.
Present.
Osborne.
Present.
Gordon.
Present.
Brockert.
Jindrich.
Present.
Lewis.
Present.
Hopkins.
Present.
Is anybody, is she up?
And then Nadine's right there.
Okay, all present, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the next item is, I'd like to read a letter, and I appreciate everyone coming today, so thank you. "We'd like to formally address and apologize for the incident that took place at this year's Fourth of July parade, Muscatine Parade, involving the parade entrant and the unprovingly portrayed and enslaved Native American woman. This parade entrant was made up of a group of individuals not representing any specific group, business, or organization within our community. Not only do we..." "Not only do we not condone this display of cultural disrespect, but we are disgusted by it, as it in no way reflects the views or values of our community, GMCCI, or the City of Muscatine. Many hours of planning and hard work went into this year's Fourth of July celebration for all to be overshadowed by one entrance insensitive and outright wrong decision while Our goal for this parade was to bring our community together and celebrate all the wonderful people and opportunities we have in it. Unfortunately, this group of individuals did not adhere whatsoever to our standards and everything we stand for here in Muscatine, Iowa. We understand that this display was hurtful to many people. I have heard from many of them, and I am so sorry to learn of their pain. A parade is supposed to be a celebration, a time of fun, and I am so sorry that our parade allowed the opposite to happen for many people. No matter what explanation and backstory has been given by this group of individuals for why they displayed what they did, it does not make it okay. And we assure our community, our state, and our country that this will never happen again in Muscatine, Iowa. Regardless of how this happened, and the insensitive choices made by two individual parade participants, I acknowledge that as the parade organizers, we bear significant accountability both what happened and for making sure it will never happen again. Up until now, we have trusted wholeheartedly in our community parade participants to know that what is right and how to appropriately represent Muscatine, and we will tighten up the process. No words will fix what has already been done. All we can do now is not only apologize and learn, but to do better and teach others also. We know our community is better than this situation, and we apologize immensely for this isolated incident. And before we get to public comment, we are going to go through Item 6, which is the approval of agenda. Next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does the council or administration have any items that you would like to change or pull from the agenda?
None, Your Honor.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this agenda as presented?
So moved, Frelick.
We have a motion by Councilmember Frelick.
Second.
Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is Communications. Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's And when everybody comes up, state name, address, city, thank you.
Kelsey Brackett, Muscatine, address 2817 Mulberry. Most of you know me, and I'm simply reading a letter on behalf of the Great Plains Action Society, so that they can speak their words when they come up. "To Mayor Brad Bark and the Muscatine City Council, Great Plains Action Society is highly concerned and incensed by the racist act of colonial violence that was initially condoned by the Greater Muscatine Chamber of Commerce and Industry. This act also reflects badly on the City of Muscatine, as we are not satisfied with the Chamber of Commerce's previous lackluster apology, as well as the lack of action behind it. I added the word previous, that was my word, because I will let them speak to what you just said. The racist stunt consisted of a white woman riding a horse holding a rope that was bound around the hands of another white woman, walking behind who was wearing a horrible Pocahontas Halloween costume. This imagery brought specific harm to the indigenous peoples by the way of playing Indian, pretendianism, whitewashing, and erasing real history and current social issues, and the depiction of harmful and disturbing stereotypes. Playing Indian is when white people pretend to be indigenous for entertainment and profit value. Pretendianism is when white people steal the identities of actual indigenous, because they have romanticized the existence, giving them authority to act like them and the entitlement to speak on their behalf. Whitewashing is erasing and toning down the genocide that was inflicted upon indigenous peoples during the theft of their land and colonization. The depiction of harmful stereotypes in this case was made evident by featuring a bound white woman playing Indian, wearing a cheap, sexually provocative Halloween costume in a subservient position. This long-lived negative stereotype of indigenous women is one that depicts them as sexual objects to use for rape and colonial violence, as they are considered less than human in that way. As many indigenous cultures were matriarchal, attacking and sexualizing indigenous women further wrought colonial violence and the destruction of their nations. This deliberately mocks the missing and murdered indigenous women crisis, where they experienced the highest rates of murder, sexual assault, and disappearances than any other ethnicity in the US, Canada, and South America. They also have exceedingly high rates of being sold into the sex trafficking industry. Regardless of whether this aspect of the parade was your intent, you allowed it, it should have been shut down immediately. Harm has been done, and so now we must move forward with a plan of action for healing and justice in Muscatine. And this is the statement from the group. I will read it as written. "We deserve and expect a more heartfelt apology rather than a few sentences posted on Facebook..."
Thirty seconds.
"...which seemed like an excuse than talking true accountability. We suggest a meeting with Iowa indigenous peoples, so folks may testify to the harm that was done. Turn back on the commenting feature for your Facebook apology to allow folks to testify. Turning off the comment feature is a form of silencing victims and gaslighting hurt and angry folks. An investigation into who allowed these women into the parade and why they were not stopped at any point by any city or Chamber of Commerce official. A forever ban for the racist organization who did this. Education for all city and Chamber of Commerce staff and officials on indigenous history, current social issues that is tied into an anti-racism and decolonization platform. Great Plains Action Society is willing to help point you in the right direction. And if I must, I will stop here, and somebody else can pick up from where I'm leaving off."
Thank you, Kelsey.
"And not everybody got their names written down. They were not familiar with the process tonight, so..."
Okay, great. Name and address and city in three minutes.
Daniel Velazquez, Iowa City. To further the statement, create a city resolution which denounces entity, corporation, group, or organization that culturally appropriates native populations. Consult with well-accredited native individuals or organizations of any future planning that may involve natives. Provide more resources for the city's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Reparations for this egregious act. Perhaps the city should donate funds to local indigenous organizations, or do more in Muscatine to invest in a grant for indigenous small businesses, or host an Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration led by legitimate indigenous peoples. Make a proclamation every year for Indigenous Peoples' Day, the second Monday in October. Make a proclamation every year for the Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, Girls, May 5. Learn more about Missing Indigenous Women Crisis in meeting with local groups, experts, Great Plains Action Society. We welcome you to attend a second annual Missing Murder Indigenous Relatives Powwow in Sioux City, being held next week from July 14th to the 16th. Provide an action plan and a timeline for these requests. In summary, this was an absolute act of blatant racism and colonial violence, and the action steps that we must have provide will help the City of Muscatine, the Greater Muscatine Chamber of Commerce and Industry, and all involved to heal and do better in the fight of entrenched racism and white supremacy in this country. Great Plains Action Society is not alone in this. There are many other indigenous peoples and allies in the state and across the country that stand with us and to do also, they signed a letter below, with more to come. We look forward to hearing back from both the City of Muscatine and the Greater Muscatine Chamber of Commerce and the industry about progress made with these requests and creating a real and lasting partnership with indigenous people in the area, and truth and power. Thank you very much."
Is there anyone else? Name and address and city, please, in three minutes.
My name is Marie Krebs. I am at 3312 Washington Street in Iowa City. There's, I want to speak on a harmful narrative that I keep hearing. I've seen that supposedly someone with this group is part, they have native ancestors, they're part native. This is so problematic. I am a mixed-race person. I have ancestors that are Apache, from what I understand, but due to colonial violence and forced assimilation, I have no connection to my people. So what you won't see me do is speak for the Apache Nation, the Apache people, because that would be wrong. That would be disrespectful. I don't know our ceremonies. I don't know our life ways, so I will not represent that nation of people. But I will stand with indigenous people in their fight, and, you know, I'm honored that I'm invited to indigenous spaces. I, I, um, it means a lot to me, because I am disconnected from my people. So this idea that, you know, I had a great-great-grandmother who's indigenous, so I can speak on indigenous things is absolutely harmful. It's completely wrong, and it's very disrespectful, and I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Why are the webcams hidden?
Kevin, can you mute until we're ready for...
I second that. Why aren't the webcams hidden?
What's the question?
There is no webcam in the meeting. You'd have to go to YouTube to see it live.
So if you, if you guys, if everybody can hear me, so you go to YouTube and type in "City of Muscatine," and then from there, it'll show you. You go there, and then you can click on it, it'll be live.
Mayor, you may want to repeat.
Yeah, so I'll repeat this again. So go to YouTube. We do not have a webcam specifically. Go to YouTube and go to Muscatine, City of Muscatine City Council Meeting, and you'll see us live right now. So you can click on it and watch there and listen on your current device.
Mayor, may I recommend that we pause for maybe thirty seconds to a minute and let us mute and give people time to access the YouTube video?
What happened to Nadine?
She's in Boston.
I've done it before.
All right, we'll proceed. Name and address in three minutes, please.
Tonsi, hello, my name is Sakawas Nobis. I'm the Executive Director of Great Plains Action Society, and I live in Iowa City. And I'm here today to testify about this egregious act, and I understand that this was not the result of anybody here that planned, you know, that lewd and egregious act, but that the city and the Chamber of Commerce allowed it to continue. And I think that's what bothers me the most, is there's always going to be idiots like this out in the world that do these sorts of things, and there's a lot of racism, as we know, that's entrenched in our society. There's a lot of white supremacy that's entrenched in our society, but it's your job as officials of this city and of the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that things like this don't, like, becomes public spectacles and create very deep harm. I know to most of you here, this might not have seemed like something that's a really big deal, but to folks like us that live with the colonial violence that is perpetuated by, you know, 500 years of genocide and colonization, this was a very shocking and disturbing scene to look at. This was not something that had a message besides exactly what it looks like. A picture is a thousand words, I don't need to describe it anymore. I really, really want to work with you guys, so you can listen to us and to what we have to say, and please take action on those steps that we put together. You know, that was written today in one day, and as quickly as we could get it together. But I will be sending a copy of this letter to every single one of you, and I hope that you read through it and take your time to digest all the different things that can be done, and they're wonderful things, and they're good things, and they're things that are going to make it better here for everybody in this community to live a good and healthy existence in a world that we know is becoming more and more racist, particularly here in Iowa, with the kind of administration that we're dealing with at the state level. So from a personal perspective, I want you to know, like, as an indigenous person, I felt very harmed. I was crying, I've been upset, I've had to talk to other indigenous women that have experienced, you know, very severe forms of violence to themselves and to their children, and they couldn't even be here today because of that, because this is too triggering and upsetting. And, but we're here, we're here on their behalf, and we're going to continue to be here, and we're not just coming for this one session. Like, we're going to continue to keep in contact with you and hope that we can work together to heal truly and work towards restorative justice on this issue. So thank you, Ahai Kita Tama Hin.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I would like to address? Is there anyone else that would like to address an item that's not on tonight's agenda?
We may have some people online.
Hello, I'm, uh...
Can you please identify yourself?
Hello?
Can you please identify yourself?
Hi, am I able to speak now?
Yes.
Yes, if you could say your name.
My name is Tobias. I go by the pronouns, and I'm from Minneapolis. I'm calling to address the, uh, the fact, the, um, so sorry, I'm a little tripping up on my words, but the egregious action of having the person dressed up as if, in a sort of native costume and a character of what, you know, America thinks that, like, native people look like, and then have that person tied up and following a white woman on a horse carrying the American flag. I need, I'm calling because I'm trying to express that I need the city council to know that not condoning the action is not the same as condemning good intentions. I've seen that there was a, there was a post about it that the group behind that particular part of the parade did not have bad intentions, that they were trying to honor the Cherokee Nation and the mistreatment that happened to them. I need, I need it to be acknowledged that good intentions do not make good actions, nor do they forgive good actions, and reenactments such as this are not honoring, they are normalizing. Good intentions mean little in the face of violent impacts, and this, the impact on not just myself, but also fellow community members is in fact violent and harmful, and I hope that the city council makes actions to make sure that this does not happen further. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else online that would like to speak?
Would like to speak?
Yes, I would like to address the city council. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could say your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes. Thank you.
Would like to speak?
Yes, I would like to address the city council. Can you hear me?
Yes. And we'll give you three minutes. Thank you.
Would like to speak?
Awesome. Yes, I would like to. So my name is Trisha Rivers, and I am enrolled with the Winnebago Tribe of Nebraska. I am also the native representative for Sioux City, Iowa, and what I can tell you is my personal, my personal take on what happened. I have an aunt that went missing in the eighties, and she was murdered, and so seeing what happened at this parade was deeply, profoundly hurtful and harmful, and although the eastern side of Iowa may not have a lot of natives, however, this is stolen land, this is still indigenous land, and I know for a fact that our communities over here, our tribal communities and our urban native communities are deeply hurt. They're kind of confused as to how this happened, and again, I work with Great Plains Action Society too as well, and I would love to have a deeper conversation on how we can move forward together. I know it's very uncomfortable to have these conversations, but it is time, it is 2023, and I think that we should be able to have the real history of what happened in the foundation of the United States of America. Yeah, that's all I would like to say. Thank you. Well, history of what happened.
Yes, if you, if you could mute YouTube right now.
Is it okay if I go next?
Probably help, yes, you can definitely go next. Name, address, three minutes.
I'm not sure I hear the council behind.
There's like a ten second delay.
Well, my name is Saipir Kacho. I grew up in Muscatine, I live over in Baton Rouge, and I now live in DC. And, you know, I used to be really proud to say that I was from Iowa, and the fact that anybody even knew where Muscatine was used to, like, blow my mind, and I would get so excited, but unfortunately, time after time again, Iowa continues to disappoint me and reminds me why I have left not only the City of Muscatine, but the state of Iowa, the state of Iowa as a whole, and will probably never come back. I am really disgusted at this blatant display of racism against Native Americans, and I can't believe that we just thought this was okay. To be honest with you, growing up, and I know a lot of, like, folks on the council, I'm sure there's other folks in the room, I've seen people in the chat that I know, like, I experienced a lot of racism in Muscatine. My family still experiences a lot of racism, a lot of racism in Muscatine. I'm like literally talking as far as, like, my sister being spit on at school and being called the N-word, and I think that we really need to have, like, this recognition that, similar to what somebody said earlier, just because you have good intentions does not create good behaviors, and the fact that we let this happen at the Fourth of July parade is absolutely wild. You know, again, I'm really sad to see Muscatine take this turn. I really hope that this does not continue to be the legacy of this town. I know that the population is about 90% white, which is something that, like, y'all should be listening to people of color. You have native folks who are offering their time after being harmed to come and help you repair the system, like, listen, just create a better space for people of color, and maybe they'll stick around. There needs to be more than an apology, and I completely support the demands of the Great Plains Action Society, and I really hope that my hometown actually takes actions to rectify this harm. Thank you.
Thank you.
CB is next. If CB can hear us, you are next.
Can you type it in the chat, Kevin?
Alito, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you type it in the chat, Kevin?
Yes, we can hear you.
Alito, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let me mute the YouTube real quick. Alito, Saha Chifo, ya'ak Courtney Graham, chota oyo sia Mokoshu Adli. Hello, my name is Courtney Graham. I am a Choctaw woman, I'm currently residing on Mokoshu land. I really don't have too much to add, as everyone's been speaking so wonderfully and covering many of the topics that I wanted to bring up. I do want to reiterate that I understand that this is not the result of anyone here currently, and I did read the statement from a chamber, but I do have a couple of questions that I haven't been, that have not been answered as of yet, or I might have missed earlier in the YouTube. One question is, why was this not addressed immediately in the parade, rather than after the parade, as stated by the chamber? This was a blatant dis- This was a blatant dis- display of racism and not a homage to the Cherokee. And the Muskwaki of the Sac and Fox tribe is actually who's in y'all's area, not the Cherokee historically. And also, I would like to know, moving forward, everyone's giving you this wonderful advice, but I would like to hear from y'all moving forward, what is the plan to educate the public and the townspeople of why this was wrong, and how are these two people being held accountable? I haven't heard yet how these two people are being held accountable. Ya'akoke for your time and giving me time to speak. Thank you.
I would like to speak.
Yes, you can speak. Yes, you can speak. We can hear you. Yes, you can speak.
I don't know which one is trying.
It was the one DB.
DB.
DB. I'll sit for a moment. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Just want to make sure I can be heard. I didn't want to get in front of anyone, but if somebody else isn't currently speaking, I wanted to say a few things. And because of the YouTube versus the virtual meeting, I just don't know if I'm speaking over someone, or I might hear myself speaking.
We can hear you right now.
So, if I could see in the chat if, if I can speak.
Okay, so my name is Nikki, and I live in Iowa City. I just wanted to say a few words, not very long at all. I'm a first generation, born in America of Vietnamese heritage, and a lot of depictions I see of Vietnamese people growing up is just of war. And that has an impact, I think, on me and a lot of other kids, where the only things we see of ourselves is violence. I want to say this to maybe help people at least somewhat understand the impact that this may have on kids or Indigenous people, seeing this, even if some people might not feel the impact themselves of seeing that. Myself and other people that saw this were shocked, and so I think despite the intention, disregarding that, I just want, you know, people who are here and others in town, others in Iowa, others in America, to understand the impact of the harm of seeing something like this, not seeing any immediate action to stop it, and really just asking for people to, to sort of try to step outside of maybe what, you know, you might experience and, and I don't want to say just to think of kids, because, not just kids, but it helps me the most to understand, to care about other people's kids too, and the impact that they can have from this, and to make, you know, actionable steps moving forward to prevent this from happening, because I believe that this will probably happen again somewhere else, and like some others had said earlier, why wasn't it stopped? And what can we do to really just move past this sort of harm being done to people? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else online like to comment?
Deshane should be next.
Yeah, sorry guys, I was glitching out, but I would love to speak. My name is Deshane Buffalo. I'm an Indigenous woman with the Muskwaki tribe in Lakota Sioux. I have lived in Tama, well, I've lived in Iowa my whole life, mostly on the Tama settlement and the Muskwaki settlement, and I moved maybe about 30 minutes away from Tama. And you guys seeing this video or these pictures was appalling, and I'm sorry if I get emotional, I'm going to try to use the right verbiage, but it's not okay. And I don't, I'm not, I'm not going to stand here for the excuses. If there was, if there was some type of good intent behind it, I, I, I don't believe that. I don't believe it. And if it was not planned out and the, nobody had any idea this was going to happen, why wasn't it stopped? And we're not getting any answers, we're just getting, let's just, let's just cover it up. Let's let everybody attend this meeting and then what? It's not okay, and we still have no answers. You guys, when I seen that video, I lost my aunt two years. Two years ago, she was found murdered on the Lower Brew Reservation underneath a mattress. Nobody's been arrested, the FBI don't care. That's what I seen when I seen that on my phone. That is what I seen. I seen my aunt being made fun of, a mockery being made of. That is what I seen, you guys. And it hurts because I love the state that I'm from. I would love to raise my kids here, but as an Indigenous woman who is raising three other Indigenous women, I'm supposed to be okay with this? I'm supposed to just sit down and take people's excuses? I don't want to hear it anymore. We want answers. We want answers. And if people are willing to learn, then let's put something together then, and I'm willing to do that with people, but I want to feel safe if I'm going to do that. My aunt's birthday is on July 9th, I would love to come to Muscatine and do a Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women Rally or Walk. I would love to do that, but I want to feel safe if I do it. I want to feel safe when I do it. That's all, that's all I'm asking. And if it was anybody, if it was anybody else's culture or race that was being made a mockery out there, I would have got out and stopped it. I would have, I would do that for any of you guys, you guys, I would, because that's in my heart. Okay, so I'm hoping and I'm praying that some of you guys would please stand with us, and like I said, if people just want to be educated, I'm all about it, I promise you I am.
Thirty seconds.
But then, you guys, it's hurtful, and I'm scared to go places, I'm scared to talk about it, I was until now. I, I know God, and God will carry me through this and my kids, but you guys, I can't take excuses no more. We can't anymore. Thank you.
Veronica, you're next.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, I just wanted to say a few words. I'm a Muskwaki woman of the Sac and Fox tribe, and to see something like this, it was just absolutely disgusting. And I want to say that I really appreciate everyone coming together for this meeting, everyone who's attending, everyone who has been able to make this happen, I really appreciate that. I think it's so important to identify like Indigenous struggle, and I'm really grateful for all the attention that has been brought to this issue. But as it was said in the chat, I would really like to tell the story as much as I can to my ability, I don't know the whole thing, but we have a missing and murdered Indigenous woman from our tribe, we, Rita Pupaki, she's kind of become everyone's aunt here, you know, like a lot of people knew her and loved her, and to see something as disgusting as that, it felt like a slap in the face. Muskwaki, Sac and Fox, we're the only federally recognized tribe in Iowa, and I just think that that was an absolute mockery and a display of total disrespect. The fact that that was, that the fact that they even sell that costume is disgusting. Like, our culture is not your costume, and it's especially not something to make fun of like that. The, the photo, you could literally see people laughing in the background, and that like sends a chill down my spine, dude. That's crazy. Like, in this day and age that we have something like that going on, adults, not even just like someone who could say that they didn't know any better, you're an adult woman, there was so many people who should have been held responsible, who should have said something like, hey, maybe that's not okay, you know? But like, I know people from Muscatine, and I, I hold some of those people really close to my heart, and I know that not all the people there, there's people that would not stand for that there. And it's just really cruel and unfair to have something like that, especially to like people of color in Muscatine, like, oh my God, I can't even imagine, that's terrible. But I just really think that this needs to like send a message to everyone and say that like, this is not okay, and you know, hopefully, we can stop something like this from happening again in the future. But at the same time, we really need to examine why this was allowed to happen. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Veronica. Is there anyone else that would like to speak online?
Tana is next.
Hi, my name is Tana. I used to live in Muscatine, and as a white woman, I'll just say that it took leaving Muscatine to recognize how much I had absorbed, as far as like the racism that I had absorbed and the privilege that I had. And I would just really like to encourage the city council to work with the Indigenous people who are, who want to work with you, the Great Plains Action Society, and the other societies that are, that are wanting to help and wanting to reconcile and wanting to march. We need, we need to heal together, and that's going to require history, that's going to require a lot of learning. And so, I just really hope that y'all will work together to, to bring healing, because there's been so much hurt. And I know that I have caused a lot of hurt even with people that I know, and that I have had to not just apologize, but then rebuild trust, and that takes a lot of work. It's easy to apologize, and you know, integrity and trust is easily lost, and it takes time. And so, my prayer and my hope is that y'all will take the time and the energy and the, in the months and years to come, to rebuild that trust that has been so quickly taken away. And I'm thankful for this opportunity to do that, and I hope that y'all will do it. Thank you for your time and for being here.
I don't think we have anybody else right now.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for the comments. Appreciate it. You, you, all right. Mr. Kaufman.
Max Kaufman, 1609 Foster Street, Muscatine, Iowa. I've sat here and patiently listened to all this this evening, Kelsey and his cohort, folks on the internet, with the most part, with the exception of three or four, most of these folks have never lived on a reservation. I have. I've lived on a reservation in Wolf Point, Montana. I've seen firsthand what they're talking about with the prejudice, the sex slave trafficking, and that sort of thing. Kelsey's throwing a few bucks toward this incident, isn't going to solve it, beating it to death with some words isn't going to solve it. It's after the fact, but to pitch a few bucks that way, that's not the answer, it's not going to solve anything.
Mr. Kaufman, if you could address the council and not the...
But to, to come after the city council here and try to whip you guys, that's not the answer either. If, if someone was very offended, they should have grabbed a cop and went out and got that horse and led it out of the parade. If you see something, say something, do something, but to wait three or four days after the fact and then come along and whip you guys like you're going to do something later, that's not the answer. Do something at the point to stop the issue, not just in the parade, but anytime. If you feel it's wrong, do something. Do something then and now, but don't wait till the council meeting and then beat up on you guys. Heck, you may not even have been there. How can we hold you guys responsible? We're all citizens of this community. Take that darn problem by the hand and do something about it ourselves. If we feel offended...
Thirty seconds.
Do something about it. That's all I got. Carry on.
Is there anyone else that would like to address any topic that's not on tonight's agenda? All right. Does any council have any follow-ups on the citizen communication? So, myself being the mayor of Muscatine, I just want to say I was in the leading vehicle with the sergeant, just, you know, leading everything, so I did not have, I did not see anything at that time. But towards the end of, towards the end of the parade, I was sent a text message by Mr. Brackett, and I put on my chamber hat right away, and I, I drove my Polaris Ranger and confronted the group. Our processes will become more stricter. I know that I'll be talking to our board at the Chamber of Commerce, I'll be working with city council, we'll make sure our process is put in place, and Christine, we'll be meeting. So, thank, thank you for coming. Everybody online, thank you so much for your comments, and we'll be getting busy. Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right. Next item is consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items 10A, 11A through N? Items 12A through C? Item 13A through E? Items, and then item 14A with bills totaling $10,843,480.86. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
We have a motion by council member Lewis and a second by council member Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Council member Brackett?
Nadine, can you hear us?
All right, I like that. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items 10A, 11A through N? Items 12A through C? Item 13A through E? Items, and then item 14A with bills totaling $10,843,480.86. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Lewis and a second by council member Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nadine? Council member Brockert?
Nadine-
Perfect. All right, I like that. All right, motion carries with all ayes. Next, we have four public hearings. The first public hearing is Part A, is a public hearing regarding an ordinance amending Title X, Chapter 20, Section 4 of City Code of Home Occupations. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hear none. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So move, Gordon.
We have a motion by council member Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by council member Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next is 15B, is a public hearing regarding the vacation and disposal of a right-of-way adjacent to Tom Brunner Field. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hear none. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by council member Freilich. And a second by council member Gendrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Council member Brockert, I'll just look for a thumbs up or a thumbs down with you. All right, very good. All right, all opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is C, is a public hearing regarding an easement agreement allowing for encroachment of Tom Brunner Field on adjoining city-owned parcel. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hear none. I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by council member Gordon. And a second by council member Osborne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next is D, is a public hearing regarding vacation of sewer easement at 2417 Grandview Avenue. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hear none. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Lewis.
We have a, uh, motion by council member Lewis.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by council member Osborne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. And next is 17A, is a resolution adopting a policy governing disposal of city-owned surplus real property. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by council member Gordon.
Second.
And a second by council member Gendrich. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert? Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. To make it a little bit quicker, should someone give her a call?
Or that, or she can type her, it into the chat if she'd like. She can do that as well.
Council member Brockert, if you say aye, um, if you could just put that in the, type it up on the, the chat. All right, moving on. Next is a resolution authorizing the sale of city property at Tom Brunner Field to Muscatine Community School District. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by council member Gendrich. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gendrich? Okay. All right.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. It's like dial-up internet.
Yeah.
Next is C, is a resolution approving and executed deed for Tom Brunner Field. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Hopkins and a second by council member Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And council member Brockert?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is D, is a resolution vacating certain right-of-way adjoining the Tom Brunner Field in the city of Muscatine, Iowa. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by council member Gordon and a second by council member Osborne. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And council member Brockert? Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Council member Brockert, city administrator Webb is going to give you a call on your cellphone, so there's no delay. Thumbs up if you can hear me.
She's shaking her head, yes.
She nodded her head.
She says, okay.
Okay, great. Next item is-
Thumbs up.
Okay, there's thumbs up. There we go. Next item is E, is a resolution authorizing the sale of city property vacating the right-of-way adjoining Tom Brunner Field to Muscatine Community School District. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Gendrich.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by council member Osborne. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins? Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Council member Brockert?
Aye.
All right.
That's pretty quick.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is F, is a resolution approving and executed deed vacated right-of-way adjoining Tom Brunner Field. Is there any motion, is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by council member Gordon.
Second.
And a second by council member Hopkins. Is there any discussion with public or council? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Brockert? Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is G, is a resolution approving Brunner Field encroachment, easement agreement. Is there a motion to adopt the res, this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by council member Gendrich. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Hear none. Council member Brockert, how do you vote? Council member Lewis?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is H, is a resolution accepting a right-of-way dedication for the Kentstein Park to Taylor Park Trail. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by council member Freilich.
Second, Gordon.
And a second by council member Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Brockert? There we go. Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is I, is a resolution setting a public hearing for July 20th of 2023 on an ordinance amending nuisance regulations contained-
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is I, is a resolution setting a public hearing-
That's really-
For July 20th of 2023 on an ordinance amending nuisance reg-
Contained with city code. That's confusing. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by council member Gordon.
Second.
And a second by council member Hopkins. Is there any discussion with public or council? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Brockert?
Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Freilich? Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Brockert?
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. It's like I'm fighting with myself on TV or something like that. All right, J, resolution vacating certain sewer easements located at 2417 Grandview Avenue. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Osborne.
We have a motion by council member Osborne.
Second.
And a second by council member Gendrich. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Brockert?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is K, is a resolution supporting an application for a thriving community's designation through the Iowa Finance Authority. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by council member Lewis. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh. Gendrich? Council member Gendrich, how do you vote?
How long do I get to make my decision?
He's testing us now.
Aye. Sorry, Mayor. Sorry.
Council member Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. All right. Got some more. Resolution authorizing the allocation of $350,000 of American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA funding, for the Mulberry Health Clinic building project and rescinding- Previous resolution 2022 and 2023 dated August 4th of 2022. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Gendrich and a second by council member Osborne. Is there any discussion with the public or council?
Just a quick comment.
You bet.
I mean, this is, this is a great use of ARPA funds and that we can support the, the new medical center that's being built, and it's great to see the construction has started. So we appreciate the community foundation and everybody that's contributed to this fund and looking forward to it, so.
Any other comments? Hear none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Brockert? Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is M, is a resolution recognizing the city of Muscatine's commitment to solar energy through participation in the U.S. Department of Energy's Soul Smart Program.
Next item is M, is a resolution recognizing the city of Muscatine's commitment to solar energy through participation.
Exactly. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by council member Osborne. Is there any discussion with public or council?
I think this is a great first step, and it gets us into the right level to start.
Yep.
So, I look forward to what we can do moving forward, so.
All right. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Brockert? Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is a request to approve entering into an agreement with the Iowa DOT accepting a federal transit administration, ARPA, grant in the amount of $49,029. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by council member Freilich.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by council member Osborne. Is there any discussion with the council? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is O, is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Compass Minerals for salt in the amount of $109,260. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Gordon.
Second.
And a second by council member Osborne. Is there any discussion with council?
So is this, may I?
Yeah.
Uh, so this is just covering what we used last year, correct? Yes, okay. Thank you.
These are, it's unusual to get police pickups. Could you, uh, I can remember you talking about it earlier, but can we talk that a little bit more about the reason behind it and?
It's the next one. I'm talking about salt.
What?
We're talking about the salt.
We're talking about the salt. Oh, okay, never mind.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is P, is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $64,362.44 to Whitekirt Contracting for the 2023 paint striping contract. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by council member Gordon. Is there any discussion with council?
I have a question.
Yes.
So is this paint, I know, I know, this has been talked about in the past. Is this the thick paint, or is this just a stripe to make it so it's going to last a year?
Well, this is, these are long-line stripes, arrows, railroad crossing signatures. It's the standard thickness that we do. Um, we've experimented with different things, and it just seems like this works well for us. It doesn't last forever. Nothing will, um, where we live with the snowplows and things like that, so. Um, but this is what we usually get, so. Does that help?
It does, because it was, I was just curious, because I know there was at one point in time that we had, they had painted the street, the streets with some paint, and it was like, you know, it didn't even last a year and it was done.
Yeah, th- this isn't like what we've put on Park Avenue where we actually ground it in so it's below the surface level. This is just applying the paint from a, from a paint truck, basically spraying it on the pavement. They'll come through, they'll clean it, as they, as part of their train that they do, they'll, they'll clean it, blow it, and then they'll paint it. But it's not like it's, it's not guaranteed to last any longer than, you know, a couple of years, like, like typically, yes.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Ed Morris Chevrolet in the amount of $94,643.10 for the purchase of two 2023 Chevy police pickups. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Osborne.
We have a motion by council member Osborne and a second by council member Lewis. Is there any discussion with council?
You were seeking clarification on why two trucks?
Yeah, I, to the availability and-
You've got it. So the availability of Tahos is really low. We're still waiting on Tahos. We ordered, or they actually placed an order on over a year ago about- or they actually placed an order on over a year ago, about 16 months ago. We haven't received. And we do use pickups from time to time, usually personal trucks or trailers to haul evidence or we call DPW to try to get trailers, so this allows us to use the bed of a pickup. Two of them we could, I thought we could utilize very well for a few years and then put in these other vehicles we have under warranty, because we also just lost two Tahos as well. So that's what we were going after with the two pickups.
Is there any utilization running that will loo- lose or that's indifferent between a, the pickup and the Tahos?
No, nothing that I'm concerned with. This should help the fleet.
Okay, and those come with toppers or no needed?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Louis.
So the price of the vehicles, does that include all the stuff that you guys need to have in them? I know you guys need vehicles. I went out on a ride and the thing rattled and shaked, so I was like, I'm glad to see that we're like replacing those, so.
So the price that you see does not include the outfit of those two vehicles? That'll be somewhere around $14,000 apiece for those two vehicles. However, we're within a few thousand dollars of our, what we had budgeted, so we're, we're sitting pretty good with those.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is R is a request to approve the purchase of an easement for West Hill Sewer Separation, Phase 6 construction in the amount of $406.68. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by councilmember Freilich.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is S is a request to approve change order number one for Folium Avenue Reconstruction Phase 1 to higher construction in the amount of $66,631. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion with council? Yes. Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, just a real quick comment and, uh, thanks to Brian, Simon and his team. I mean, it's better to see change orders come through at the beginning of a project and throughout the project as opposed to at the end of the project possibly a year later. So keep on the good path and, uh, thank Hire for doing this for us.
Any other questions? Comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is item T is a request to approve an agreement with Muscatine Center of Social Action for $30,000 to provide housing stabilization services. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion with the council? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Very good. All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Last item is a request to enter a compensation study agreement with PayPoint HR in the amount of $37,500. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Louis.
We have a motion by councilmember Louis.
Second, Gordon.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with the council? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Councilmember Louis, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
Um, not for me. I don't like this today.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Gordon.
Uh, yeah, just real quick on a positive note, I had the opportunity stop at the Project Rise Above program, which is a new MCSA onsite housing shelter, uh, to help the homeless problem here in town. And once again, they're showing how they can come up with new opportunities and programs to help. So thanks, MCSA, for always being there for us.
Councilmember Freilich.
Nothing yet, you are.
Councilmember Brockert.
Okay.
See if she will.
Okay, I shut the TV off. I would like to remind everyone of the human trafficking event that's going to be July 18th from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Riverview Center. It's free to the public and it's being sponsored by Fruitland Community Lions, Muscatine Rotary, League of Women Voters, and the Muscatine Lions Club. That's it.
Councilmember Gendrich.
I would like to comment, Mayor. Uh, I know the, uh, the Fourth of July celebration includes a bitter, hurtful event and I think everyone's ears are open to that. But I appreciate the positive, hard work of the chamber, uh, other, uh, community leaders and so forth that, uh, put forth an effort, city staff and so forth to have, uh, you know, for the most part, certainly an enjoyable Fourth of July. And, uh, you know, celebrating our independence and everybody equally being able to participate in that is a, uh, a terrific attribute for anyone living in the United States. So, thanks to the chamber, city, you know, and all that. We had a good, uh, had a good Fourth of July outside of, like I say, a hurtful event, for sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Osborne.
I'd like to add to what Jim, John was saying. Um, it was a good event. Uh, lots of good people put that together. We did have a bump, uh, an issue, uh, however you want to call it. I know I won't use the right adjective and it's probably not enough for the folks that were offended. I will say this, um, that I appreciate all their voices and what they said. And although it's somewhat easy to not, probably for anyone here to not feel personally responsible, I would like just to think of that as response-able. We are response-able. We are able to make a response that's appropriate and turn this to the good of Muscatine. And, uh, I don't know what that looks like. This is new ground for me and probably everybody here. But, uh, you know, it sounds like we got a lot of good voices out there willing to help. They gave us a pretty specific list. Um, I don't know how much of that is doable or appropriate or, or whatever, but, uh, I, I do think we'll work on it. And, uh, I guess I'd make this an even better, more inclusive place for, for the city and the people that live around here. Be the shining light in the state of Iowa on this topic. Uh, and on a lighter note, this Saturday is Goat Yoga.
Say that one more time.
Goat Yoga.
Goat.
It's like regular yoga, but with goats. At the Lincolnshire, Lincolnshire Learning Center. Uh, Boonies is also having a Jeep run that all vehicles are welcome, so, uh, you know, tricycles, I guess, anything you want to take and, and do all that. There's that going on and still a lot of great things happening here in Muscatine. So, yeah.
Nancy, what would you like to share tonight? Anything?
Pardon me?
Would you like to share anything tonight?
Um, no, but thank you for asking.
Alright, you bet. City Minister Webb.
Sure, I have two items. I just wanted to recognize and thank Clint Christopher for the work that he's done with me on the, um, Tom Brunner Field transaction. Behind the scenes, there was a lot of work and many hours that went into navigating that. Um, and Andrew, um, he would partic- Andrew Fangman participated in, and, uh, you know, developed the agenda items that you adopted tonight. So it was more complicated than we maybe originally thought, but, um, I thought we worked well together and so I'm glad to consider that complete. Um, the other item is I want to apologize to the council and to the public too because it's my job to make sure the meeting runs efficiently and we need a web camera on that computer. And I think that's caused the delay that you're experiencing tonight in the vote. So that's something I'll be following up right away with staff on. And then Kevin and I have also talked about moving our online platform to Zoom. Um, it's not, it's not an additional cost. Um, and I think it's something that more people utilize and so we will be making some improvements there.
Great.
Thank you for that, Carol.
And, uh, yeah, so again, just wanted to echo, what happened was extremely unfortunate, but there were so many good things that happened that day to celebrate the United States of America. So many good things and, um, at the chamber, I have the most amazing staff that anybody could ever have. Dina, Hannah, Alicia, Jordan, and Rebecca. And I appreciate all your hard work that you guys did, uh, to, to make all that happen. There were so many good things that came out of that day. We celebrated a Colonel that came back to Muscatine. We had amazing music. Where there was two pilots that are, that have Muscatine ties that were flying that Chinook that night as well, which was the, one of the first flyovers, I believe, that Muscatine has had. And I think it was absolutely amazing, so also let's not forget a lot of the good things that make Muscatine what it is today. And like Jeff said, there's many great things happening in Muscatine. And, um, I, I also echo what you said. We will definitely look at the list and see what we can do. So that is all and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.